In one of the emails Megan sent, she sent minutes from 2007, when the seating was approved, that they have. You were here. And you are who made the preliminary, we made a resolution. If they were to be allowed to have six tables seating hours from five to nine on the weekends. They were supposed to add plantings. I don't see any plantings there now. Visiting July 2007, they didn't send me any emails after that, minutes to know whether it was ever revisited. I don't know how many tables they have now. I think more than six, though, but I don't know. So.
One photo.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Dean, how are you? I hope Gary knows those meetings. Joe didn't, that's all I called him. What? I don't know. He didn't. I don't know. Should we give Gary another minute? Um. Did he, I'm trying to think if I've seen him on any emails. I have not seen him. I have not seen him. No, Vish is in India. He probably has a fancy car that he can voice text up. Yeah, not me, but I'm sure you can. Oh, my gosh, it's 2012. Yeah, no, oh my gosh, car plate is essential. Yeah, yeah. So this is, what do you, what do you mean? Ah, this is the, these are the minutes from 2007 when it was approved. So I just highlighted the conditional approval that they received when it was Pisces Restaurant. And they were supposed to have eight, six tables seating hours five to nine. There's supposed to be plantings and things, and none of that's there. So I, I mean, that's what it looks like now, I mean. Right? I mean, look, I'd like to get rid of that, 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 that.
There is a photo, I thought.
Right?
Seen, no, but of, of another location.
Oh, you have a colored one. Oh, is that in here?
No, there is.
There another folder that they sent us, we're in openness. Also, I'm gonna find out why these ones don't work, because they're supposed to be being delivered again. See, yeah, I think.
Yes, that's the one.
Yeah, and I think that's just like from the manufacturer showing like what it could look at, so. This is what it looks like now. Well, I guess it's seven o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If Gary, Vish is on vacation, if Gary shows up, he shows up. So. Huh?
But I'm.
Lee's here, Kristen's here, and I'm here, so we're here. So I'd like to call the February 21st planning board meeting to order, then there is just new business on the agenda. Pedro Huerta, 181 Hudson Street, this is just a preliminary meeting. Looks like the applicant is seeking to add two gazebos located in front of a restaurant, one for each existing approved patio outdoor space. And it looks like that patio space was originally approved back in 2006. With six tables for the whole patio, seating hours of five to nine. And, yeah, so Manny, I guess this is just a preliminary meeting, correct? Correct. I guess maybe just tell us quickly what you're looking to do? Are you just looking to put up two of these gazebos that we got, these 12 by 14 hardtop gazebos?
Hi, I'm gonna be translating.
Oh, okay.
Conveying their idea.
Sure.
They have these pre-built pavilions that are ordered from DJ Wholesale. They're pre-built, they just have to be assembled at the location where they will be, you know, you know, set up. It would be two gazebos over the pre-existing seating areas, where there is currently the, like, two patios that are divided by a walkway that leads into a secondary entrance into the restaurant.
Right. So just one on each of the patio?
Square of seating area.
So I guess Manny, Joe, like, is this permitted in the Village Code?
It is permitted in the Village Code, but it needs a site plan approval or the approval of the planning board.
Okay, so there's nothing in the code that says you can't put these up?
That's correct.
Right, so the, the real issue is they have, they have a site plan from a number of years ago.
Right.
So they're doing this, you know, relatively simple amendment. I just talked with Manny briefly, the, the site plan, you know, from the olden days, so to speak, is just kind of a hand, kind of a hand-drawn site plan. So the question is whether the board would, you know, on the one hand, just allow them to submit that older plan, maybe with some handwritten, hand-drawn amendments. Or otherwise, the board could require them to have a site plan prepared by an engineer and architect, but that would probably exceed the cost of what they're actually doing.
Right.
But that's something that the board would have to kind of decide.
Okay, so that's all we're supposed to decide right now?
Well, I, I reviewed the application. And it's really, as I said, kind of, kind of straightforward. They have the pre-existing site plan approval, they're just looking to add these accessory structures.
So I guess I just wanna make sure that, have we made sure that the, what, what we're doing on the patio already abides with what's in this conditional approval that was given in 2006? Because in 2006, it says the seating's five to nine on the patio, six tables total, acoustic tiles and planting must be added to the front of the building, lighting should be down shielded no greater than a one-foot candle, and in July 2007, that was supposed to be revisited. Do you have minutes reflected from 2007 that that was?
There were some minutes, the only thing that I found when I went out to the side, there were, there were two tables more than required. There's four tables on each side rather than three, which I informed the applicant that that needs to be changed, or require any additional in front of you if they choose.
Okay. But other than that, everything else that was in this conditional approval is, is met currently?
Correct.
Okay.
But the amended site plan application would need a public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would need a public hearing.
So it will need to go to a public hearing?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, how do we feel about?
Calling for a, a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, do, I, I suppose we could skip right to that if we were not going to ask for, you know, a full engineer drawing, all of that. I mean, I don't think that's necessary.
No, I don't think so.
Because even looks like. Yeah. I think that would be kind of productive. Yeah. We assume that this is gonna fit. Yeah. Yeah, we, we know that these 12 by 14 structures fit nicely, neatly, top of the space.
As he proposed it, I mean, they, they come unassembled, so he had to assemble it, you know, the dimension that they gave says that it fits in the spot.
They, those pre, I'm sorry, those pavilions come in multiple sizes.
Okay.
You select what size.
You need.
Square footage you're looking for, so they order them, well, they plan to order them based on what is already there for seating.
Okay.
Essentially, they wanna put a roof over the tables.
Yeah.
They do have umbrellas that they, you know, put out and then put back into the restaurant at the end of the night, but.
Right, so those would be gone, and then you just have tables out there.
The reason I want to put it in is because I wanna do like more comfortable than the customers. This way, I mean, he can stay where they're eating, that's the only thing you're good. Oh, that's right.
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So how, how are they gonna be secured, you know, fastened to the, the ground?
They're gonna have to provide that with their installation when they get a permit, that will be part of that, but they will have to be secured to the ground.
And you'll, you'll, you'll decide whether it's proper or not?
That'll be my part to do it, inspection when they submit the plans.
Okay.
You have to do this.
You have to withstand the wind load and.
The, the, the assembly kit comes with, I don't know if they're called like base structures to hold the pavilion, you know, down and, and secure it to the ground. But that's part, I guess that's part of the assembly process, that they be grounded.
Sure.
And the, and the, the building inspector will decide, he'll, he'll speak with them to decide, you know, if the board approves it, how the pad properly secure.
But in fact, the instruction gotta bring, you know, specification for the area far as wind load, snow loads and those kind of things, so make sure that it meets those requirements.
Okay. So.
Are there any embellishments that you, Manny feels should be added to the very basic drawing that we have from way back in the old times? Before we have a public meeting where we don't want, you know, a whole other group of problems to descend upon us?
There is some basic information at a minimum they'll, they'll have to provide as far as the setbacks, the, the size of the area that they're gonna be using, the height of the structure, the color, any lighting, if they're gonna use any additional lighting in the area. So certain basic information I will be requiring them to provide on, even if it's a basic site plan, if you agree to have a basic site plan, that they'll have to have on the plan. And I'll submit those plans to you to review prior to set that meeting. And if you feel comfortable with the information, then we can go forward with the meeting, or any additional information you may want.
This doesn't make sense to me.
There is a list of items in the code, we got 14 items that is required for a site plan, but that will be a site plan done by a design professional. If you want all of those, you can ask for all of those, or the ones that you feel are required for this particular project.
Well, I mean, all we have right now is, is this, with a little red ink on it, showing us where the patios are. So it doesn't show us any required setbacks. Anything. It just, it's, it's not a site plan, this is.
That's just to bring you the idea forward of what they wanted to, as a preliminary, and then you could set the standards on what you wanna see on the site plan.
I think, yeah.
To the co-section.
Right? We're gonna need something.
Right, but Manny, just, just to be clear, that, that is what you show in the file as having been the approved plan?
Correct.
Okay, alright, so that.
Previous application.
So this was the approved, this right here was the approved site plan back in 2006?
That's what the building inspector says, yeah.
Okay. So this is, we're either working with this, or we're requiring them to spend a bunch of money?
They, they gotta provide more. Like I said, right now, they're just giving you their idea. Section 17229 has a set of requirement for a site plan. Which you could ask for all of those requirements, or they also give you provision for a waiver on some of those requirements that may not be needed, if it is not needed for this particular project, then you can waive those. But definitely, they gotta give more information than that.
But, but just to, just to be clear, the real issue, I think, is whether we allow the applicant to provide a, a hand, personally drawn site plan.
Right.
With, with the dimensions and the setbacks and, and the other requirements, or whether there's a, we require a professional drawing?
I mean, I don't wanna make them like, you know, break the, break the bank, but I need something more than this, so.
And it has been suggested that there might be a, a meeting in between this and the public, any public meeting called, to go over whatever changes have been made to this per our request.
It was supposed to be, this is preliminary.
I think today, if you, if you can decide that you wanna go with a preliminary, not a preliminary, a, a hand-drawn plans, you can set the standard for those plan, what you wanna see on those plans, then I make sure that those items are on the plans, and I'll submit it to you prior to the meeting for your review. At that time, if you feel comfortable, then you can say, you say, yeah, let's set the public hearing, or you can say, no, we need more information, we can't set a public hearing yet.
What section of the code are you looking at?
17229.
Dash 29.
A and B.
I got it.
A is the requirement, and B is for the waiver.
Well, I'm not. I mean, I, I don't think that for this, we need. So here are the things that we could ask for, a detailed development plan showing the applicant's entire property, adjacent properties, a convenience yield, that we should get.
Mm-hmm.
So we should require, number one, location, width, and purposeful existing proposed easements, restrictions, covenants, reservations, and setbacks. You'd require an engineer probably for that, though. And nothing they're doing really changes any of those things, right?
I agree.
So I think I'm okay without that. Number three, the proposed location, use, and exterior design of all buildings and structures, we would need that.
Yeah.
There is no proposed division of buildings or structures, right? So we wouldn't need number four.
That does, yeah, so four doesn't seem like it applies.
Number five, doesn't really seem like it applies either, because grade elevations, we're not changing any of that.
Right.
Number six, I think I'd like to see the parking, you know, on the plan. I mean, that shouldn't be complicated to.
Is this all, I would imagine this is all off street parking, do they have any?
There's parking, right?
Is there parking in the back? Oh, there is, okay, alright.
I don't know if there's any outdoor storage areas?
No.
Yeah, okay, so.
Okay, no.
So we don't need that. Location of existing site improvements, including drains, culverts, retaining walls, fences, and sidewalks. Just the gazebo. Yeah, I think we need that, right?
Potentially show this, the sidewalk.
See the sidewalk where it is, so we need number eight?
Is there a fence, is there a fence or no?
Uh, there's no fence.
No fence.
The fencing around the enclosed, the area that they're gonna be using.
Yeah, there's fencing like around those two patios.
Yeah, and the sidewalk.
I'm gonna need to see that. Description of message of sewage, we don't need that. Location and sizable signs. Well. How do we feel about that?
I don't think they're proposing anything different.
No, I think it's not gonna change, so that's fine.
Lighting.
Yeah, need to see any lighting, so location design of any lighting? So there's gonna be any lighting under those gazebos, what it's gonna be?
Do you know if there's gonna be any outdoor lighting?
They're thinking just like string lights, or something along, similar to Christmas lights, not really like.
They should show any lighting, I mean, lighting is part of what's.
That'll need to be included.
Lighting it is what you should show.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other pertinent? Yeah, and then I guess number 14, anything else that's pertinent.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, whatever, yeah, I'll, I'll go out there and I'll take a closer look as well.
Okay.
So right now, I got six, eight, 11, 12, 14, what were the other ones?
One. Number one?
One, six.
Three, didn't we?
Eight, what do we do?
One, one, six, eight. Three. Six.
Eight.
Eight.
11, 12.
Yep, 11, 12, and 14.
Okay.
Okay? So then do I have to go ahead and? I, this, by doing that, I'm giving a waiver to the others, correct, Joe?
Correct.
Well, I'd rather not say waiver, but, but you, you're trying to tell them.
Do that, alright, let's, let's see this before we.
Yeah, rather than waiver, I think what you're saying is, this is what you're instructing them, you need for you to consider to complete site plan.
Okay. Yeah, so I think if we see those things, even if it's, you know, hand-drawn and, you know, suitable, come back and see us again, and then we can go from there.
Do you want them to come and present that, or can, can they submit it to me, then I'll submit it to you, and you can approve it that way?
No, they should come, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, they should.
He's trying to avoid a.
I don't think so. No, I think they should come, I mean, this is a preliminary meeting, we have to have a meeting, and then we can go to a public hearing from there.
Okay.
I mean, that's the process.
Yes.
It's, nothing's quick, but it's, it's still cold out, so nobody needs to eat outside yet, except for yesterday.
Preliminary meeting.
Right. But it is, right?
But it is.
Well, then, that's it, really.
That's it, really, I mean, do you have any questions for the?
No. Oh, see, uh, bueno, eh. Uh, like, two, three days ago, the inspector for the bar, he came over there, and he tried to make me to fix a, a tie on the container for the garbage, and I don't know if I need to permit to do that, or I'm going to do like that.
Talk to Manny.
Just a minute?
Yeah.
That's the only thing.
Is there?
I wanna make like, if I do the permit with this one, I wanna do it all together, you know?
Yeah, so just talk to Manny about that, and you can probably put that all on one permit, I'm sure.
Do you want them to locate, if there are any commercial disposal containers or anything on the, do you wanna look them, have a certain location on the plan, or?
I mean, wherever it is now, they just have to enclose it, you know, that's, they don't need to come, you know, before the board for that.
But it should probably, if they're gonna enclose it, I would think they should put it on whatever they're gonna submit to you, right?
Well, I, I think.
You mean, you're talking about a fence around it, or?
Yeah, but that, that code doesn't put under the zoning code. It's, it's a separate code for, for property maintenance.
Okay.
Well.
Requires an enclosure.
Okay, is it gonna be in one place at, all the time?
Where, yeah, wherever it is now, yeah.
Alright.
I mean, if the board wants to, I guess you could, I mean.
I'm just asking.
The site plan, you can, or we add it, why not? But usually.
We have required that.
The one thing we have to consider is how DPW gonna pick it up. So that's why it's usually left up to DPW to select the site, 'cause they're the one coming with the truck to pick it up.
Okay, we don't necessarily, if it's in one place, we don't wanna lock them in forever on the site plan, is kind of what you're saying, right?
Well, I, I mean, we could, we could put it to the planning board if you want, and it will submit it to DPW for review. We normally do that for new construction, like we did for 275, you know, we make that new construction or something like that part of a site plan. An existing condition, it's just that they never enclosed it, and the code requires for it to be enclosed.
Okay, would, completely different question, would the, but if it's commercial, the DP does, W doesn't pick it up, right? Don't they have a private car?
Well, some, some commercial they're picking up, let me ask, who, who picking up, who picking up your garbage now?
I could, who's picking up your garbage now?
Okay, so it doesn't get picked up by DPW, okay.
Oh, Marazzi. Okay.
For the site plan.
I mean.
No, I'm not, I'm, honestly, I'm, I'm really just asking the question, I'm not trying to necessar, like you say, if it's new construction, and you're putting in a site plan, you wanna know where the, where the containers are gonna be located, I'm not, I'm not trying to make it more complicated than it is.
Which I think we can bring up.
Yes, I.
Not a big fan of that.
No.
Okay.
And the colors, the, you know, the there's no place in the village where we have more power than CBS, if we don't use it here.
Yeah, we can't use it anywhere. Do you own the building now?
No.
No, they are renters.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's an owner's endorsement in the, in the packet. The owners consented to their, them applying for the site plan amendment.
Okay, okay.
So do you wanna, do you wanna give them a, well, if they wanna come back in March?
If they wanna come back in March, they have to do the, what we just asked for, so.
A date to make the submission to Manny, so that he can get it to you, and
Well.
you have time to look at it before the March meeting.
21st.
And when does?
Well, that, that's, that's something to be considered as well, because that's Village Election Day.
Oh, yeah, we, we got, we got moved back away, didn't we?
I think so.
Megan sent us a new calendar for the year.
When's the Village Election, the 21st?
Actually, she's pushed it to March 28th.
So it's 28th.
Rather than the week before she pushed it.
Well, I would think that, that that should be to you by the time a submission for the meeting should be to you, so whatever's, I don't have the calendar of all those submissions in front of me, so that date, does anybody have that in front of them?
I will, can I not give them a report, a complete report, what they need to provide and by when?
Okay.
When I get back to the other side of the company.
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna get it on March 21st and have, you know what I'm saying, it should be in by when, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so then I think we're, we're good to go. As long as you, Manny, you can communicate to them the points that we're looking for.
I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should see you again next month.
Thank you.
I suppose we're supposed to have minutes, but I don't think we have copies of those minutes, do we? No.
Um, there should be.
With your agenda.
It looks like she needs to.
Oh, here we are.
Meeting minutes to that, and then the planning will date to the next year, or this, this year.
Well, can we approve anything with three of us, anyway? We can't, because.
No, you're good, you'd have a majority.
I know, but if, well, you'd listen to this, so you would know whether it was accurate or not, did you look at them? Okay. I mean, I looked at these already, because Robyn sent them to me, so.
I still don't remember from October, so let's go ahead and.
I know I looked at them right after.
So actually, the, the agenda.
That was my contribution.
Good, good work. So I would make a motion to approve the October 20, October 18th, 2022, meeting minutes, twenty seconds.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's look at December. Oh, here are the dates right in front of me. I don't have those. Two X, what does that mean? See what that means? I don't wanna approve these December ones, because I don't know what this means, and. So two X added?
Just for the dates.
Yeah, so you only have two people from the December meeting, so if you wanna hold off on that.
Yeah, I think we're okay with October, but I think we're gonna hold on on December, because I wanna ask for clarification on that. And then, let's see. Should be on the March, so by the 28th would be when they should get those back to us, which is pretty soon, right? That's like next week. So Manny, Manny, if we, the submission date for the March meeting. So Manny, Manny, if we, the submission date for the March meeting is actually February 28th. I know that's only a week out. Um, do we think it's possible to turn that around in a week?
Even though the minute's gonna be later?
Yeah, why don't we give them another week, really?
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's shoot for the 28th.
Okay.
If, it, right, I mean, I'd rather have it in sooner than later. If not, like, one week past that would be the, the deadline. If it comes in anytime later, no to March. Oh, so we can go ahead and approve these too. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, proposed 2023 planning board dates. It looks like everything's the third Tuesday except for March for the village election.
Please second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're really getting a lot of things done tonight. Good work, team.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I shall move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're relieved now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Now, why does Gary not know there was a meeting? Does he not get the emails? So good emails.